This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year. I'm pleased to welcome everyone to today's regular and organizational meeting of the Hudson River Black River Regulating District. For members of the public attending remotely, the agendas are available at hrbrrd.ny.gov under Board Meetings. We ask that you please close other programs on your computer or phone, silence your cellphone, and mute your audio when not speaking. The conference organizer will monitor the program's chat function for public comment. We'd like to call our organizational meeting to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want everybody to mute their phone? I should do it, wouldn't I? First order of business is, excuse me, call the organizational meeting to order. And the first order of business there is we need a nomination for chairperson. Need a roll call. Oh, okay, sorry. Roll call.
Board Chairman Mark Finkel.
Here.
First Vice Chair Ken DeWitt is on his way. Board Member Albert Hayes.
Here.
Richard Byrd.
Here.
And Nicole Allen.
Here.
Executive Director John Callahan.
Here.
General Counsel Robert Leslie here. Chief Engineer Robert Fulton.
Here.
Chief Fiscal Officer Timothy Manicha.
Here.
And the Director of Administrative Services Stephanie Riziky.
Here.
Excuse today are Mr. Candido and Mr. Reagan. Okay. Understand?
Very good. Now I can say the first order of business is nomination for chairperson. I would like to nominate Mr. Mark Finkel for chairman. Is there a second to that?
I will.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for the question. Now we need nomination for first vice chair. I'd like to nominate Mr. Ken DeWitt for first vice chair. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I need nomination for the second vice chairperson. I'd like to nominate Mr. Alfred Candido for second vice chair. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That'll show them. The appointment of Secretary, Treasurer, and Assistant Secretary/Treasurer. I need a motion for the following slate of candidates to be nominated for Secretary/Treasurer and the Assistant Treasurer. Secretary, Mr. Leslie; Treasurer, Mr. Manicha; and Assistant Secretary/Treasurer, Mr. Fulton. We have a motion to that effect.
I will.
We have a second?
I'll second. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Nicole.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? I need a nomination to designate the following newspaper to be the official newspaper of the Regulating District for the purpose of inserting legal notices and may be required by law or rules and regulations of the Regulating District. Nominating the Times Union and the Watertown Daily Times. Is there a second to this nomination? I'll second that. I'd like to ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Finkel?
Aye.
Mr. Hayes?
Aye.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
We have a 4-0 in favor. That is a most impressive.
Next tentative dates and locations for the 2024 meetings. We need to adopt the schedule. The meetings are as follows. February 13th, March 12th, in the Hudson River area to be, all the locations are to be determined. Black River area on April 9th, May 14th, June 11th, July 9th. No meeting in August, September 10th, October 8th, November 13th, and no meeting scheduled for December. So we need a motion for that tentative schedule.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I will.
Any further discussion? As I said, this is all tentative, but all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I would only clarify that notice for each meeting will be published in accordance with the opening slot closer to the time of those actual meetings.
Okay. So it is passed. That being the official business of the organizational meeting. Vote to adjourn or a motion to adjourn. Make that motion. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Out of 10:07. Next is the regular board meeting. I will call the January 24 meeting of the Hudson River Black River Regulating District to order. Roll call, Mr. Leslie.
Board Chairman Mark Finkel.
Here.
Second Vice Chair Albert Hayes.
Second.
You are not.
Ken DeWitt is second.
Sorry. First Vice Chair is Ken DeWitt. Ken is not here. Second Vice Chair is Mr. Candido. He is not here. Board Member Albert Hayes.
Here.
Richard Byrd.
I'm here.
Nicole Allen.
Here.
Executive Director John Callahan.
Here.
General Counsel Robert Leslie here. Chief Engineer Robert Fulton.
Here.
Chief Fiscal Officer Timothy Manicha.
Here.
And the Director of Administrative Services Stephanie Riziky.
Here.
Board Members Candido, Reagan, and DeWitt are excused.
Thank you. Motion to adapt the agenda. I know no reason to revise it. So I need that motion. We have a motion to adapt the meeting agenda.
I'll take that motion.
Second?
I will.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd like to point out, and sorry, I don't know his name, but somebody from Bergman Associates is a guest. We welcome him. What's his name?
Greg Johnson.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Greg Johnson.
Tom Mueller, also of Bergman, attending.
Oh, okay. And I know of no one, no public comment. Is there a public comment from Zoom?
Megan, anybody sign up for a public comment?
No.
Okay, with that, we move to number six. Approval of the November 7th, 23 regular board meeting minutes. I have a motion to approve?
I will.
Second? I'll second that. Any revisions or corrections? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we move to report to the Executive Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report appears on pages 12 to 13. And I'll just note a few things. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone. Happy State of the State Day. We certainly benefited from our relationship with the Governor and her team. And so we look forward to hearing what's next in store for the state of New York today at 1:00. And certainly we continually continue to work closely with the Executive Chamber on many issues here at the Regulating District. And certainly, although he's not here with us, we're with Mr. Candido in spirit today on his birthday. So we wish Mr. Candido a very happy birthday in abstentia. I just also would like to note and thank the whole team here that goes through an exhaustive process each year to get renewals out the door. That begins with formulating a letter to send to permittees and ordering the forms and printing the letter through court crap. None of which happens without trial and error and sometimes some delays. I especially would like to thank Stephanie Riziky for working through a number of those issues. And importantly, as we move into our fourth year of the online permit system, and I'm not going to steal too much of her thunder for her report, but we are up and running. You'll hear more from Stephanie about that in just a little while. But also want to thank the team here that works 101 from a customer service standpoint with the permittees. Certainly Stephanie Porter and Daniel Thorne, Dan Kiskus, the whole team. This, I think the term "it takes a village" comes to mind. But again, we're off and running for 2024, and we'll hear a little more about our successes there. Also, just want to note, not to steal Mr. Fulton's thunder, but he did a great job after the December, mid-December rain event in doing some forensic analysis of avoided flooding impacts downstream. And so it seems like the Regulating District is playing its flood protection role through storage maybe later and later in the season each year. Just in the next 24 hours, we have a major precipitation event, and that form of precipitation is probably a different form than you would normally expect at this state in this part of the world typically. So these challenges are significant, but the operation of storage reservoirs both in the Hudson River area and Black River area provide a major protection for downstream residents during that event. And even though it may be unfair for taxpayers in Saratoga and Warren and Washington, rest of the Albany counties to be stuck with the tab, you know, quote unquote, that Brookfield is ducking out on. Those residents in the flood zones are still receiving the benefits, even though they're not generating profit like Brookfield through the operation of Great Saucanagale Lake and the Cottonville Dam. They're still deriving very important public safety benefits. So we just want to note that, and again, I don't want to take too much out of Mr. Fulton's reporting, but we continue to provide those protections as we speak. And really looking forward to 2024, you know, again, to think about where this board was just five years ago, facing some significant challenges in trying to execute a very necessary capital program with one project under our belts, with another one underway, and with significant design work ongoing and getting close to wrapping up on Old Forge and Six Lake, and certainly looking forward to sort of the signature project in Cottonville over the coming years. It's a very exciting time, I think, to be part of this effort. And we thank the board for its leadership, for its support. And 2024 will feature not only those projects, but a new collective bargaining agreement with our representative personnel, a new three-year spending plan, which we look very close to, look forward to working closely with the board on finalizing more enhancements to the online permit system, work permit functionality, welcoming new colleagues to the team. And certainly, we hope, finalizing agreements, whether through the courts or outside the courts. Mr. Leslie will have some more information on that with Brookfield and Stillwater, probably at least one of those through the courts. But so it will be an eventful year, 2024. I'm excited. I hope you're excited. If not, I'll pause and for any questions, any members of the board may have.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Callahan? Thank you very much for your report. Contracts and actions. First one, resolution to amend contract C032013 with Colliers Engineering and Design, formerly Bergman, to modify the scope and not to exceed contract price. Mr. Fulton?
Mr. Chairman, we have presented the 14 memorandum and a resolution to consideration regarding adjustments to the fee for contract E032013 Indian Lake Dam engineering, design, and construction support phase of the project. As you mentioned, we do have Representative Greg Johnson, water discipline leader for Bergman, here to give the board a presentation with regard to and concern of this request for change in fee for the project. Welcome, Greg. And you do have also a copy, a hard copy, but Greg will go through the, sorry.
No, no. Before Greg starts, you'll notice on page 14, between pages 14 and 15, both of which are crossed out, a revision to that resolution has been placed so that we more particularly articulate the name of the entity to whom you are awarding an amended contract. That is the reason that the red stripe is on the 14, and you'll find another one on the old page 15. Sorry.
That's all right? Yep, thank you. All right. So thank you for allowing me to come in and talk to you about this. And, you know, I'm Greg Johnson, like I said. So let's get right into it, John. The chart with all the numbers, which is in your packet for you to really look at. The big thing, you know, I'll acknowledge is it is not a small change. And I mean, the rest of this, we'll go through that. Why this is what it is. If you look down, I'll just skip down to the bottom here. The change in design fee is a plus 16%. So this design that we estimated, it took us, our final design was 16% more than we thought it was going to be. And the big change is in the construction inspection phase, which is a large one, and we'll see why that is. This one, we're at the mercy of what that final construction project actually is. So you'll see that the biggest change is in that construction inspection. So I just want to acknowledge that. Go to the next one, John. So we're, I'm going to talk about the design side of it right now. So this talks about kind of when we put together our design fee originally. We had just gone through the engineering assessment phase, which went through what the shortfalls of the dam were in terms of regulatory compliance. And then we went into a design phase, a preliminary design memo phase, where we went into what we thought would be able to fix the dam. And when we're doing these, we're running very basic type numbers. We're coming up with concepts. We're doing enough to show that the concept will work, but there is not a detailed design at that point. We use those assumptions to develop a fee proposal, which we gave to the Regulating District, and it was approved. So just kind of goes through the assumptions we made when we gave that proposal, which was we were going to have to do a facing on an existing stone retaining wall with some case rock anchors. These are the things that you'll see way into the second phase. These are some big assumptions that we made. The bulkhead logway sluice, we were just going to put a concrete weir in there, block it up. We were going to buttress the spillway to provide the strength that that needed. We weren't going to do any site work related to a DEC request for the kayak, either portaging or portaging, depending on where you grow up and how close you are to the Canadian border. And, you know, kind of the last bullet is related to the first one, which is that concrete facing. We'd assumed it was a pretty simple standard design, which is going to be done for other dam sets that we're going to take it, just three draw-ups. So go right on. I talked about the final design proposal, the work that we did for that, and created that design report. We did some hydraulic and hydrologic analyses to show the final design was going to address what we needed. We recognized that there was additional load on that earthen embankment, which is the retaining wall. That's what necessitated the retaining wall. We did some evaluation and detailing of that, and we analyzed and strengthened the spillway. So these were the analysis that we did, and that's in the design report. And in the final design, when we actually get into this, the, that stone retaining wall ended up being seven drawings instead of the three that we'd assumed. Instead of the concrete weir in the logway, during design, we recognized the advantage during construction of having an operable bulkhead in there. So that was a change that we went through. That added seven drawings to our set and a lot of analysis and detailing of that. The spillway strengthening was revised. We extended the core wall that's in the dam. We recognized that was a potential failure mode of the dam, so we added that work on. We added water control sequencing during the construction, kind of how the contractor was going to go through all that phasing. We kind of put the design proposal together. You're saying this is what can work. When you actually do the design, you actually figure out the phasing. And then the portaging or portaging trail was added. Next. John? So the key changes is that retaining wall, which we had assumed it was just going to be a concrete wall facing with some rock anchors which provide tension, and they were going to be cased so that we didn't pull the wall into the other wall. That turned out to be a major ordeal due to unforeseen things that we discovered during the design phase of being able to address varying rock conditions so that we didn't run into design complications when the contractor was out there and found differing field conditions. We designed in a bunch of flexibility for that. When you actually got through and dealing with the actual loads, the loads were higher than we anticipated. And then dealing with unknown conditions on the actual free attic surface or the water that's within the embankment that we're trying to hold back with the retaining wall, when we're drilling the anchors through to make sure that we don't have an issue during construction of that, where the water level in the embankment is such that drilling the anchors through would be dangerous. So there was a lot of effort spent on getting that wall solution and then optimizing that solution, getting everything to work together. The design of that bulkhead logway sluice was the other major effort, which was a lot of detailing and working with the equipment, mechanical, electrical, to get that to work. And then the change in the spillway, how we strengthened the spillway was simplified, but using solely anchors instead of the buttresses that we were going to use. And then we added the kayak trail. So, and that is the design side. The key differences in the construction inspection proposal, and I told you that's the major difference, is basically everything in the design, the construction, was more complex and was going to take a longer duration than we assumed when we put the proposal together. You'll see that. The actual accepted proposal from CD Perry and how they were going to do the work differed from what we'd assumed. I mean, remember, we're providing a proposal for construction inspection services before the design is done and before the contract was awarded, so we were kind of guessing on how long and how things were going to be done. CD Perry was not going to do a winter shutdown, so they're working all winter long, which means increased inspection duration, more onsite visitation from the design team, which is a DEC requirement for critical activities. The more complex construction meant more of that design needed to be looked over. And then because again of the increased complexity of the actual construction project, more subills, that type of thing. So. Then a little review of the fees. So the original budget, our estimated cost when we were doing this based on our final design report, we estimated it was around $4 million. And that's what we based our fee on. We used about 16% of the construction costs is what our design fee was, and the same thing for inspection, which you'll see is roughly what the industry is for this type of project. So our total fee is about 32% of the job of the thought. The actual awarded construction cost is 10.8 billion, so more than double. So we just go through this. So here's our original design, the first side of this graph. You can see our design. I think the blue is constructions, or the blue is design, the dark blue is design, the light blue is construction inspection. As we were going through the engineering, when we got to the end of our design, we had doubled our engineer's estimate for the work to $8 million.
Construction.
Construction, sorry. Thank you, John. So the dark blue again is, well, this is what the, our engineer's estimate is. And the dark blue, I think this dark blue and the light blue is based on where we were at this phase, but based on the awarded cost. So in terms of percentage of the awarded price, we were at about 8% of the awarded price for our final design, if you accept the amendment, 7.8%. And then the construction inspection, we are looking at 1.5 billion for that, which is about 14% of the awarded price. So you can see how the actual contract of the construction went way up, and our design and CI is going up at a much smaller rate. And especially the design to end up with an 8% design fee, less than 8% design fee and a 14% CI fee. And this kind of gives you an idea of what the, kind of the range is for the industry, 12% to 15% in construction for a design. The more complex designs would be at the higher range. I would, I would maintain that this is a complex design for this dam, and we ended up at 8%, less than 8%. Well below the 12% to 15% kind of what you'd see. And then the CI, which is about 10% on staff, and then 5% is the backend office support that we're providing now. 15%, we're looking at 14% of this. So combined is, if you take these two here, it's 27% to 30% more, it's 22%. So long-winded explanation. I will answer any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions or comments? What would it cost to put a new, sorry? What would it cost to put a new dam in?
Brand new structure? The entire structure? You're probably talking 10 or maybe 200 million plus.
Yeah.
Wow. I don't remember off the, the insurance provider had asked us at one point to put together a cost for replacement. Don't remember off the top of my head, but I do believe we're in that neighborhood.
We also have a many, many years-long permitting phase. You've already got some design.
Sure.
If you could, from this.
Yeah. So I just reiterate, iterate and reiterate, right? The request for the change in fees is driven by the fact that the complexity of design, once Bergman entered final design phase, was certainly more significant than we had anticipated and reasonably could have expected. And maybe didn't underscore enough the complexity of the wall with the seagun pile and shoulder pile. Construction and structure is significantly different and more, quite a bit of extra design time, and was necessary to give us the stable structure and to facilitate construction. design time, and was necessary to give us the stable structure and to facilitate construction without de-earthing in jeopardy. So, and then obviously out of that very complex design came an extensive set of design drawings and a, based on bid pricing, much more completed project and costly project per construction than we had anticipated, which along with that goes, the need to make sure that it's done consistent with those, completed consistent with the construction documents, and thus more time for our consultant in the field and the construction inspectors, as well as the engineers who are part of the design to be a part of the project, to make sure that it's completed consistent with the contract documents. So, staff recommends modifying the scope of work for contract C 03 2013 to include the additional engineering, design and construction support and inspection services, and seeks board authorization to amend contract C 03 2013 to include the scope of work and fee outlined. And Bergman's proposal dated January 2nd, 2024 seeks authorization for the executive director to execute an amendment to increase the contract price by $929,186 to exceed contract price of $2,268,377.
Do we have that motion on the table?
I just had one question regarding the complexity of the project. How does it change the timeline for construction?
Don't know if it necessarily affected, Greg, maybe you can, I think we had previously assumed it was going to be 12 months going into final design.
Right.
Or thereabout. And so it's still, currently the construction schedule has this finishing work by the end of this year.
Okay.
One of those reasons, I think, is because C D Perry is running, working through the winter, which is doing that shutdown.
As compared to only 8 to 2 months.
And, and we also drive the schedule.
Yes.
To some extent, you know, presented the bid documents with the expectation that a contractor will come in and bid with a conclusion date anticipated at the end of 2024.
Okay.
And I think I would just briefly add to that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that, you know, the presentation today, Rob's request to the board to consider this amendment follows several months of fairly, sometimes heated discussion with Bergman about the need to control these costs, and no shortage of discussion with the CFO as well about fiscal impact, which you may be poised to answer questions from the board on as well. So, you know, it's not, you know, we don't, we don't come to this request lightly or without a lot of deliberation and a lot of discussion with Bergman about the need for this amendment.
Do we have the money for it?
Yeah, where do we get the funding?
Thank you both for asking that important question. The regulating district has sufficient funds in its current year budget from both the cash and appropriation perspective to cover the balance of the existing contract. As for the amendment, the regulating district should appropriate the amount of the proposed amendment in its budget for fiscal year '24, '25, which will be before you come June. Regulating district is also included in the clean water state revolving fund application it submitted to New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, an amount sufficient to cover both the amendment left on the contract and the amount of the proposed amendment. In so doing, we have built in to that application the ability to draw funds from E F C should conditions relating to the project or interest rates change from our current expectation. This is all predicate, of course, on E F C's approval of the short-term financing the regulating district is seeking, and we have continued to be optimistic that the, that the final approval of that application will be positive.
And along those lines, the other resolution that you have before you today is a clarification regarding our state environmental, state environmental quality review act review or determination. If you turn to page 30, you'll see that resolution wherein we're basically just clarifying that the rehabilitation of the Indian Lake Dam is a secret type 2 action. In order to get that approval from E F C, they have asked that we clarify that, in fact, the determination the board made in August with regard to this project determining this to be a replacement rehabilitation or reconstruction of the dam is actually what you had intended to say at that point. So that's linked to funding. Funding is linked to the additional construction observation and other aspects of the resolution before you on page 14, just so that, just going to bring that all together. Any other comments? Well, you had put the motion on table. Somebody want to officially make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, a resolution. We discussed it, clarifying that the rehabilitation of Indian Lake Dam is a secret type 2 action. Mr. Leslie. Right. So basically, in August, August 1st, at your regular meeting, the board determined that the project to rehabilitate the Indian Lake Dam is a type 2 action. Basically, the replacement rehabilitation or reconstruction of a structure facility in kind on the same site, including upgrading the buildings to meet building energy, fire codes, unless such action meets or exceeds any of the thresholds described in, in the secret regs. In articulating that in the minutes, we were a little crafty, probably said more words than we needed to, and some of those words made it to E F C. E F C wanted us to clarify for them that this is actually a type 2 action and that an environmental impact statement is not required. So that's all that this resolution does. It basically clarifies that on August 1st, before you started spending money on this project, you had already determined that this was simply a rehabilitation of an existing structure and therefore a type 2 action and doesn't require an E I S.
Yeah, I think it's also fair to say, Counselor and Tim May as well, this reflects just, this, these are, this type of project is not the type of project that E F C currently typically funds to this funding source. And they are checking boxes that they need to do for what, as Tim indicated, we hope will be a successful application. And when they can't cleanly check a box that they ordinarily would, they want to make sure that there's no ambiguity, no question.
Right.
And so we are happy, very happy to come to the board and ask you to pass this separate, standalone, clean resolution that moves that process from the law.
Okay. That being said, I need a resolution clarifying that the rehabilitation of the Indian Lake Dam is a secret type 2 action. You have a motion?
They'll make that motion, Mr. A.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion or comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
No, no.
Next, staff and committee reports. General Counsel, Mr. Leslie.
My report is on page 32. Basically, remind the board that on October 19th, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission issued its order on rehearing addressing the January 2023 petitions filed by both regulating district and Erie. We had reported that per the Attorney General's request, on November 11th, we updated our July 5th request for representation to the Attorney General, specifically to request only that the O A G prosecute that appeal through the federal courts, an appeal of the October 19th order. Despite the available extensive record, a robust discussion resulted in a December 8th decision by the O A G's Environmental Protection Bureau that it would decline to appeal that matter to the federal courts. They suggested instead that the more direct path to success would involve the general recoveries unit of the O A G's Civil Recoveries Bureau and a request to ask them to commence an affirmative case seeking to redress against Erie in the state or federal courts. We have engaged in concurrent talks with that unit, and at their behest, had the executive director send a demand letter to Erie, and subsequently I followed up with another demand letter to Erie that the O A G unit had solicited. They then solicited another request for representation specific to the affirmative case and indicated that they would then also send a demand letter to Erie should Erie basically fail to pay the $1.4 million that, that we demanded. We gave them until January 16th, we gave Erie until January 16th to pay that amount, which basically represents 7/12ths of the 2.5 million annual fee that we expect Erie to pay from this point forward. Yesterday, I received from the Civil Recoveries Unit an indication that they have considered our request and are prepared to move forward, which is great news. They asked me to deliver to relevant staff and the board a litigation hold memo, which is in process between me and the assigned Assistant Attorney General, and we're trying to figure out exactly what language should be included in that litigation hold and to whom that hold should be delivered. You will all get it. Pretty much everybody in this room will get it. We will probably expand it out to a couple other members of staff. But the basic tenet is, we're going to be in litigation. Anything you have with regard to Erie Boulevard and/or the negotiation is discoverable and has to be produced when the time comes right. So don't delete anything, don't defragment your hard drive, don't buy a new computer and throw out your old one, don't roll our files into logs and burn them, keep everything.
Glad you mentioned that last one.
So now, that pretty much wraps up where we are with Erie. Does anyone have any questions regarding Erie? Stillwater is a different, different issue. Myself, the executive director, chief fiscal officer, continue and engage with representatives from Stillwater regarding disagreements over the value placed on the hydroelectric plant at Stillwater. The party's opinions on value remain unresolved, but are closer than previously, previously reported. We have engaged in discussions with the New York State Power Authority relative to Stillwater's proposed sales terms. Stillwater has suggested a purchase leaseback agreement, which the regulating district has rejected. Staff will continue to negotiate a defensible price and entertain any other potential buyer and pursue other opportunities with New York State entities, none of which seem to be coming to fruition. We have a meeting with, or we had a meeting with N I P A. We have invited N I P A to take a look at the physical plant, at the physical condition of the plant at Stillwater. We anticipate that that will happen the end of January, beginning of February. John has had discussions with Mr. Tucker from Stillwater Associates, who is adamant that the value of the plant is far in excess of what we believe it is, and is adamant that we have an obligation to purchase the plant, and I believe is talking to litigators about the prospect of suing us over this valuation. As, I think Tim will back me up, the longer that this plant is in their hands and they continue to generate revenue from it, the less valuable it is to us. They valued the plant as of December 31st, 2021, and that's the number they're sticking to. They can't deliver the plant that they valued on December 31st of 2021 to us. It has diminished in value since that date and continues to diminish in value every day that, that we go forward. Do you want to add anything to that discussion?
I would just say, very, I think, helpful, productive conversation with Mr. Tucker before the end of the year. You know, Rob's right, you know, as we know, he's told us last couple of discussions we've had, that, you know, he feels compelled to talk to litigators that might pursue this in court. I think the bottom line is here, we recognize our contractual obligation to purchase the plant. We also recognize our responsibility under public authorities law to not provide more than fair market value for the plant. I remain hopeful, you know, we did make a tentative offer in a previous round of negotiations. I clarified in my last conversation with Mr. Tucker that doesn't represent, you know, a last and final, but rather what we thought was a fair offer if we wanted to try and move this forward in a relatively aggressive timeframe. But I think our ongoing, first of all, I want to echo what Mr. Leslie said and thank the Power Authority, President and CEO of the Power Authority, Justin Driscoll, was on that call, very engaged. He's made some of his team available to us. They have come up, come back to us with some follow-up questions in advance of their site visit to Stillwater. And I wanted to thank Mr. Tucker for, we mentioned to him that we wanted access to the plant with the Power Authority, and, and he's granted that access to us, because I think it's in our, in our best interest to resolve this without litigation. It's going to cost us a lot of time and money, it costs him a lot of time and money, and the better thing for everybody is for us to come to a resolution on this issue and identify a subsequent operator of the plant who then will provide us revenue, just like Stillwater Associates has. So I'm optimistic, you know, really, I think that we're going to reach an agreement. But I think we all recognize we have, one, very real financial limitations. The impacts of the purchase price for the plant will be passed along to beneficiaries in the Black River area, and that's a very real thing. And we have unforgivable requirements and obligations under public authorities law. So those, those two things are certainly going to guide our discussions with Mr. Tucker going forward, and hopefully this can be resolved without, without litigation. But I'm cautiously optimistic, frankly, and really give a good conversation for the end of the year, and we'll see what 2024 brings. Thanks, Rob.
Any questions on Stillwater? Last thing is the concurrent use in occupancy agreement with D E C for Indian Lake has been executed and being implemented. That's it. Any questions or comments? Mr. Leslie?
Thank you very much. And thanks for the interview. I hope this is how it did.
And thanks for the effort, I know how difficult this has been. Thank you. Director of Administrative Services, Mr. Zink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report is located on page 33. During the reporting period, I worked with our IT, identities, and printing vendors to coordinate the renewal operations and resolve any issues as they arose. The renewals have been mailed, Friday paper renewals went in the mail, and the portal opened and ends up this morning. We've had over 1,000 renewals paid online, very strong and positive start to the online system. As Mr. Callahan mentioned, we are hoping to add work permits this year, and they'll offer the permit holders another online feature, allowing them, both paper-free and convenient to submit their work permits online. We received several resumes from applicants interested in the maintenance specialist positions. I have reviewed the resumes with our operations manager, Matt Ginter, and I'm hoping to schedule interviews in the next few weeks for those positions. Please take time to look at the contract sheets on pages 34 to 36, their inclusion in your work packet, as part of the public authority law requirement. Remaining of the reporting period, I was working on contracts and compliance reports as detailed in my report. If you have any questions, if not, I can please.
Any questions or comments? Very good, thank you. Chief Fiscal Officer, Mr. Meech.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You can find the CFO report on page 37 of your packet. We are now halfway through the current fiscal year. Cash investments are running approximately $400,000 or nearly 5% ahead of where we were at the same period last year. Revenue exceeds expenses, but by less than last year and can be explained by both the absence of the reservoir operating agreement with Brookfield that we have been discussing here, as well as the page goes, spending the regulating district has made at Hawkinsville and is making at Indian Lake. In non-financial matters, John had mentioned in an email to you that the state comptroller audit of security over critical systems has been completed. We approached this audit as an opportunity to improve in this area, and thanks to the commitment of our team, as well as the knowledge and professionalism of the auditors from OSC, I know we will do so. The results of the audit speak favorably about the actions the regulating district has taken in the last year with respect to cybersecurity awareness and risk management. Like in so many aspects of governing, there's always more that can be done, and that applies here as well. In the coming weeks and months, we will be working to implement the recommendation made by OSC that relates to developing policies and procedures as required for compliance with data security standards established by the payment card industry. Formalizing these policies and procedures will complement the appropriate steps the regulating district has already taken to secure processes and systems used to accept the credit card payments that Stephanie just was referring to. We fully commit to completing this work within the 180 days required by Section 170 of the New York State Executive Law. And let me stop here and offer to answer any questions you have about the audit or the regulating district's finances.
Any questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Now, before I pass the talking stick along, I'd like to also call your attention to the signed affidavit that I emailed yesterday to all of you and have passed out to those participating in person today. It lists necessary and reasonable expenses incurred by board members relating to their participation in the November board meeting. Article 3, Section 2 of the regulating district's bylaws require the board to approve payment before any reimbursement can be made. And before you ask for that motion to approve these expense reimbursements, let me offer to answer any questions you or the other board members may have about them, and apologize again for the late delivery of this expense report.
Does everybody have that? We have 131 for Richard Byrd for the traveling to the Sacanaga Field Office, and for Mr. Candido, 11004, for a total of 24104. So I'd like a motion to approve those expenses.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Next, Chief Engineer, Mr. Fulton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report begins on page 77. Highlight of December's operation, as very technical correct, I can do it. Our storm event and significant inflow occurred around December 18th, and the result of that precipitation event, the Hudson River area saw between 150 and 180% of historic average precipice and inflow to the Great Sacanaga Lake, over 240% of historic average during December. Indian Lake received about 184% of historic average inflow. As a result of the storage capacity capabilities of Great Sacanaga Lake and Indian Lake, successfully reduced the peak flow in the Hudson River on the 17th, 19th period by about 65%, avoiding a flood flow which would have occurred without storage capacity provided by Great Sacanaga Lake and Indian Lake reservoirs in excess of 50,000 cubic feet per second in the Hudson River. And so you do stack down to, I believe it was about 30, 33,000 was the peak, and the difference would have pushed sections and reaches of the Hudson River below the confluence of the Sacanaga River with the Hudson to well over maximum flood stage by probably actually several feet as compared to the level of flooding that occurred. Similar precipice and storage in the Black River area, about 140% of historic average precipice in the month, and Stillwater does work on inflow of 174% of historic average. On a terrible and smaller scale, our inflow to Stillwater reservoir reduced the flow of the Black River by between 15 and 20%. Additionally, in the end of my report, I also included a summary and update on the progress of work at Indian Lake, and also included Collier's summary report for progress, as well as just a simple photo that we've taken of some of the clearing that's gone on in preparation for construction. Continuing those updates for you, hopefully have some greater photos depicting progress as we move into further construction over the next few months. Do you have any questions, Mr. Hastings?
Do we have capacity for another five inches of rain coming in the next couple of days?
We still have storage capacity at all of our reservoirs, despite Great Sacanaga Lake rising to about 764 currently, about 13 feet over the target elevation. That leaves us still with, before we reach spillway, in the neighborhood of 7 billion cubic feet of storage capacity. So at this point, I'm not concerned with our, or the reservoir's inability to store water, we still have room to store that water.
I still see docks floating.
Yeah, I think that's a trend that might continue. But fortunately, this morning, it looked like the National Weather Service had predicted some of the higher elevations to stay snow longer, and, you know, and it looked like rather they moved that marginal risk of flooding flying a little bit to the south, but certainly interesting weather.
That's right.
To end 2023 and to begin 2024 at a time when you'd expect most of that precipitation to look different than it has been.
Sure. And it's been the trend more recently, and, you know, in particular, now, as a result of the last four to six years, you know, one of the reasons, as you can see in the diagram, graphs of the elevation of the reservoirs, the reason we stay to our target as best we can in anticipation of this kind of event, and it's not unusual to see inflow, and I think you might recall, I may mention the fact that it was unusual that it hadn't occurred earlier in the winter or, or I should say, in the fall, and that it waited until this point in early winter to occur, but it's, again, it's still historically an event that we typically see. The magnitude of this one was a little bit greater.
I guess, and it might be a conversation for another day, but in light of these types of events, and I guess the appropriateness of the aggressive use of storage concept, which benefits a hydroelectric company's power generation, it has now stopped making payments associated with that hydropower generation, whether taking a step back and looking at the reservoir operation more closely aligned with how it operated for the first 80 years of its operation, where the drawdown in the winter was a little more, and the aggressive use of storage concept for hydropower not applied. Now, we get into, probably that discussion gets into, you know, petition to abandon the license and all this, all these other exotic things that, you know, Rob Leslie was.
It's not that exotic at this point.
No, so I guess the question is, an independent scientific analysis, given what we're seeing in terms of climate change and these types of events, is it better to more closely examine the critically important public safety part of our mission, even at the expense of some hydropower generation, which has value, but now less direct financial value, even as the downstream residents who receive those flood protections are being asked to pick up the tab? So if they're being asked to pick up the tab, does it make sense to take a step back and look at whether?
And those residents have more significant assets downstream.
No question, no question. So I don't mean to derail the conversation or Mr. Fulton's report, but it certainly was interesting, we were privileged to welcome and host the Hudson River Foundation for a tour of our facilities in November, as I know we've been reporting before at the time. They do these types of studies, and we had a very rough early conversation about what that might look like, but if it's the case that we can protect the public better and adhere to our enabling statute and mission more by sort of steering away from the aggressive use of storage concept at a time when we, where the financial benefits associated with that directly for us have, at least for now, evaporated, that might be something we want to talk more to the board about in the future. Sorry, Rob?
No, that's all right. Appropriate. Yeah, are there any other questions?
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Board member questions and comments? I have a real quick one. I meet with John fairly regularly, and first thing he always talks about is what a great job every member of the staff is doing. And I just want to echo that, and it's true. I mean, you listen to these reports, and everybody's just doing a fantastic job and not so easy time. So I want to thank you. Thank you. Resolution for the next board meeting, there is, please note, there's no February meeting, and our next meeting is 3:12, tentatively scheduled for here. Motion for the next meeting?
Aye.
Second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for adjournment? So moved. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
And happy birthday to Mr. Candido.
Happy birthday.
That's right.